So we'll start with Josh and then move on to Isabel. So Josh, the fourth, yours.
Thanks. Hello, everybody. Good afternoon from Geneva. And thank you for allowing us to to talk about one of the some of the current initiatives going on in in context of integrated outbreak analytics. As many of you know, it's garbage in, garbage out when it comes to the data from whatever sources we have. In terms of bringing them together and interpreting them to get the context of of the of the circulation of a disease or the context of an outbreak. And one thing we've learned from this pandemic is that if you have systems that are really fit for purpose and targeted best to their needs and all of them working together in surveillance, you can get a much better picture, if you will, of of what's going on. And that's the context of what I'm going to share with you now. A current initiative called the Mosaic Respiratory Surveillance Framework that's coming here out of the Department of Emerging Emerging Department of Epidemic and Pandemic Preparedness and Prevention here at WHO. I'm here as a technical advisor for influenza and other respiratory viruses. And and I'm happy to give you an update on this. I'm presenting on behalf of both myself and Isabel, who are leading this initiative. Okay. So, as you know, countries are now in a position in coming through this pandemic to detect and monitor both influenza and SARS-CoV-2 and other respiratory viruses of epidemic and pandemic potential on an ongoing basis to inform control policies. And the member states appropriately so during this pandemic requested a coordinated approach to sustainable monitoring for respiratory pathogens moving forward. An initial discussion centered on, of course, how do we leverage the important Global Influenza Surveillance and Response System to monitor SARS-CoV-2? And within that Sentinel Surveillance to start monitoring multiple respiratory pathogens as well. This is work that started before the pandemic, but really picked up in haste with the need to monitor SARS-CoV-2 during the pandemic. One thing we do know, though, is that it's impossible to address the many complex needs of respiratory virus surveillance with a single surveillance system and multiple systems are needed and each must be fit for purpose to specific surveillance objectives that all need to work together to give the best needed information to policymakers. And for some types of objectives, surveillance systems may not be able to sustainably provide the complicated information needed at all, and they have to be complicated with special studies and outbreak investigations and other types of investigations that Isabel will talk to you more about in the second presentation. So in essence, each surveillance system for respiratory viruses needs to fit together like tiles in a mosaic. And it's only with each of those systems that you get the tiles together to see the full picture of respiratory viruses. And that's the analogy of the mosaic here. And this framework, therefore, was a work by WHO and its partners, many people within WHO, the regional offices and external partners, to place the systems that are represented by existing guidance into a context where they can address the objectives for which they're best attended intended. So I had mentioned flu. Flu was heavily leveraged. It continues to be leveraged through the pandemic because it has the global network of national influenza centers, standard protocols for high-quality Sentinel Surveillance in many places, standard approaches to reporting data from the national to the regional to the global level for interpretation. And of course, extensive history, 70 years of history of lab protocols, reagents and quality assurance programs and the connections at the animal-human interface for early warning to understand and risk assess new and emerging viruses as well as assess the effectiveness of ongoing interventions and vaccines. So you could see the relevance of this when a new pathogen emerged in SARS-CoV-2 to leverage this kind of system for for SARS-CoV-2 monitoring. For seasonal influenza, a core component of that, of course, is Sentinel based surveillance. When you have an endemic respiratory pathogen, you need not count every case, but you need to have a high-quality and representative sample of 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 specimens to understand risk factors, risk groups, severity and so forth. And the Sentinel systems for SARS-CoV-2 or for influenza are one important component of many essential systems. If you have good Sentinel Surveillance, it can give you circulation trends, trends in healthcare burden, vaccine effectiveness. Look at epidemiologic changes over time, as well as the genetics associated with the viruses detected and the metadata and risk groups at some level by age. But this can't be everything to everyone. And one thing we also have learned over time is that without other options that are clearly available for people for multiple sources of surveillance, any single system might start to be overwhelmed or perhaps extended and leveraged for purposes that it's not best used for. For that reason, if you think about this mosaic concept, we have needs at the animal-human interface to identify new novel viruses and new variants. There's needs for event-based surveillance, of course, to always identify outbreaks and triggers of concern. And by definition, Sentinel Systems won't be there and have the sensitivity necessary to do that. And we've learned from this pandemic, there's other critical systems, those that measure hospital capacity, those clinical networks that are needed to monitor treatment outcomes and long-term sequelae, the routine pharmacovigilance necessary to monitor adverse events associated with new pharmaceuticals or vaccines and detailed studies and targeted investigations of high-risk groups or vulnerable populations in specific settings or closed areas. All of these things are beyond some of these other traditional Sentinel Systems. But we recognize that they're not only essential in a pandemic, but they're essential for understanding the circulation and impact of respiratory diseases year in and year out. And then, as I mentioned, we have to know what these systems cannot do so that we know where to focus our technical investigations and studies so that they are meeting the needs that best address high quality, high priority objectives or policy needs. And so just having more data isn't knowledge. Each of these systems got to be targeted to high-priority local objectives and be fit for purpose if they're going to be resilient over time and then potentially scaled up and not dropped in future pandemics. So that's what this strategic framework is. It's focused on viruses, respiratory viruses of epidemic and pandemic potential with a with prototypical examples of influenza and SARS-CoV-2 because they cross the whole gamut there. But it'll also be relevant for other circulating respiratory pathogens. Much of what we talk about will have implications for things like monitoring RSV and other important respiratory pathogens that may not be quite of pandemic potential, but of epidemic potential as well. And it sets forth an implementation plan where at the national level, countries will assess their objectives, their needs, the systems in their context that can best be put together to form their own mosaics of needs so that they can resiliently monitor the impact of respiratory viruses moving forward. So this is a framework, if you will, and the way I've described it is it supports some tactical implementation of collaborative surveillance, which is an important component of what WHO is doing moving forward now with its Health Emergencies Preparedness and Response Program. But it's not new guidance. It doesn't supersede any other guidance, but puts them in context for use. So you've got regional guidances for respiratory surveillance, you've got global guidances. And this document allows people to go through and select their priority objectives. But then for those objectives, it will relate the systems that use experience suggests are best fit for purpose to meet those objectives. And then it'll refer the user to existing guidance for how to implement that system. We're not creating any new guidance with this framework. But there's a cacophony of information out there about respiratory surveillance, if you will. And this is putting it in a context that's understandable and useful for busy stakeholders at the national level. So the scope of this is early warning and monitoring of respiratory viruses of epidemic or pandemic potential over the long term. So it's really interpandemic guidance. It's not ongoing SARS-CoV-2 pandemic surveillance guidance. Although it includes a section on possible mechanisms to scale up interpandemic surveillance during pandemics. And that's important because in many cases, we saw existing systems dropped rather than scaled up in the current pandemic. And then new systems or case-counting setups created de novo that maybe didn't have as high-quality data as would have occurred had we scaled up existing systems that were there and ready and fit for purpose. This takes a national perspective on surveillance needs, which means the mosaics may vary by country. Some countries, like the United States, for example, have been doing a mosaic approach in essence for years, building up to the pandemic, putting different sets of studies and surveillance systems together to understand influenza and other respiratory viruses. But for much of the world, especially in low and middle-income countries, such guidance for how to put that together hasn't really such a framework for how to put that together hasn't really existed. And a lot of new innovations have come out of this pandemic. And it takes care to assess them and what needs to be considered before they're used and in what context they might be useful, as well as the traditional methods of surveillance. So this mosaic of coordinated systems is broken down by domains in this. And there's three core domains in in this framework. The first one is essentially early warning. What are the systems that need to fit together for early assessment, detection, early detection and assessment of an emerging virus? Domain two is for what systems need to work together to monitor trends and severity and intensity and impact of viruses that are now widely in circulation in human populations? And then what systems and studies need to fit together to evaluate if your interventions are effective or not? And so with implementation, a national-level partner would use the framework to first go through high-priority objectives that exist globally and choose those most relevant to their their needs nationally to prioritize existing surveillance enhancements to meet those needs and to develop implementation plans to do so, to strengthening the synergies between surveillance systems so that you get a holistic picture of what's happening with respiratory viruses. And that's very much relevant to IOA, which is referenced in this framework and how you would bring bring that information together to be more than the sum of its parts. And then, very importantly, especially in low and middle-income countries, there are so many players in surveillance now because they realize it's such a need that it'll help a national program leader prioritize local and international partner technical and financial investments on the systems that are most important to them and not just random systems. It also looks at the bigger picture enablers that must keep surveillance functioning over time in a country. And so we try to make this relevant to national policy stakeholders. Within each domain, we present it as what are the policy-relevant questions that if you put your mosaic together in this domain with systems, you will be able to answer for your country? In domain one, is there something emerging? Does it spread easily in humans? How severe is the clinical presentation of this? Who are the high-risk groups? These are the nuts and bolts of of the epidemiology of an emerging threat. But for preparedness, any country needs to know that its existing systems and associated studies must be ready to go to address those. Then, once something's in circulation, you need to know if you're in an epidemic period. Is it bad? Is it a bad season compared to others? The public always wants to know that. How are systems coping? How is the virus changing over time? And what are the clinical and epidemiologic characteristics associated with infection? Are they changing? And what's its impact in high-risk settings? Is that changing? These are the things you care about monitoring for respiratory viruses year in and year out and especially in pandemics as well. And then, of course, the effectiveness of interventions in domain three. I recognize I'm going fast, but I'm trying to keep us on time here. This has been a year going, and we've taken a great deal of inputs from countries and regional partners, as well as global technical partners. We've gathered them during using regional surveys and online surveys and focused country discussions. And then we've had regional country consultations in every region of the world. And that was brought together and upward aggregated to a WHO global consultation last May with 340 attendees from multiple countries in all the regions where we put together this these domains and the critical questions that you were just looking at. And then since then, we've worked together to to do multiple drafts of this framework where we we create the core and then the enhanced components of surveillance that that need to exist to meet the needs within each domain. We've gone through three rounds of inputs now with the regions and others. And and we are now to the point where we are soon to go into to hopefully complete executive clearance and will be developing launches and implementation plans and tools for the for the world in the coming year. I essentially just said all of that, and this is displayed in this graphic of fairly ugly color characteristics that I chose myself, so no one else can be blamed for that. But in essence, you know, what we want to do is practical systems at the country level have to start with local objectives. And so the concept of this is built about for any country, this is built around their local needs where they identify their national objectives, the systems best fit to address those objectives, and then prioritize local investment to meet those objectives. They can use that to coordinate their partner investment investments, enhance linkages to both regional and global data so that every country feels that they know what they can answer with their own data, but they also leverage global and regional platforms to answer questions that they have the power to do locally. And then very much where this group is involved, hopefully, is to ensure how those systems are coordinated at the national level to enhance response. So my goal in the context of IOA, our goal is to make sure that the data that are coming together for interpretation are as fit for purpose and as useful as they can be for the purpose of 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 looking at them synergistically together. So I I think I've said most of what I need to say. It's the first time that we've got systems putting coming together in a collaborative context. And it's identifying the most important approaches and needs for early warning, resilient interpandemic monitoring and informing the use of interventions. It's bringing together recent innovations from the pandemic into ongoing surveillance initiatives. And it should hopefully guide how properly focused interpandemic surveillance can support epidemic, pandemic and other emergency monitoring needs going forward, trying to learn the lessons of what many countries were unable to do in the current pandemic. So that's that's my my short overview of the mosaic framework and happy to have any other discussions as needed.
Thanks so much. That's great super presentation. I think what we'll do is we'll see if anybody has any clarification questions. And then we'll take Isabel's presentation, then we can have a full discussion after after both presentations. But I'll just scan to see if anybody has any immediate burning questions. For Josh. Going once. Going twice. Okay, so Isabel, then I'll share my screen for you. And put this one up. Thanks, Josh. And then we'll have a chance to have a discussion with everyone together. Let me just clear the screen. Sorry, there we go. And it's all yours.
Okay, so let me start not to waste too much time. So I think I would like to cover for you today, and Josh has already introduced the concept of what we are calling now the investigation and study, really addressing pandemic preparedness and 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 response. So for some of you, you may have already encountered the term unity studies. This was the really operationalization of this context of this concept during the COVID pandemic. And I will walk you a bit through the key lesson learned and also the future direction. Next slide. I won't go further. It's really I'm trying to make the link also with Josh's presentation just before. As you may have heard, there is this need for this mosaic of respiratory virus surveillance system. But there is a certain objective that are not efficiently met by the existing much more routine survey and system. And this is where the discrete studies and summary investigations, some call them operational research, are of value. So for you, perhaps to put you much more into practice, it's about the all the transmissibility parameters, the secondary attack rate, but also vaccine effectiveness, population immunity or susceptibility. And it can goes also to the assessing the impact of interventions. So all of this is around the same goal for pandemic preparedness and effective response. Next slide. Let me go back to COVID. So the investigation and studies have been implemented for three years. At that time, it was a global framework for N and surveillance and operational research. The aim of it was really just simply to be able to compare apples with apples. But having in mind this equity concept, because there has been plenty of studies and investigation put in place, but you have had them so differently put in place. The sample sampling sampling frame was not relevant in most most of the time. So there was a lot of waste in operational research or and surveillance. So it's the reason why this initiative has been put in place. And also, the third concept is to take action. It's not research to publish papers, despite we've published some, but three years after, I mean, at the end of it. But it's really it was for policymaking decision. So at the time of COVID, we've put three, ten protocol on the WHO website, and we created the architecture for countries to receive from us, but also from a variety of partners, some technical support to make sure the the methods were right, but also the financial consideration were addressed, the ethics, but also the sending of all the material and reagent. Next slide. It's slow. Doesn't want to move. Yes. Okay, just a map that is self-explanatory. Where you see colors, it's been the country has participated in this initiative. What we call participation in this initiative is that they have implemented at least one of the ten protocols you have seen then, and they may therefore to really align in term of the methods especially or in term of sharing their results with WHO in advance. And what was really important for us is to have a low-income country being able to implement the study to at the same level of quality as any other country in the world. And we have had a special focus on humanitarian settings countries. And you will see in the number, but it's feasible. A lot of people say it's not feasible during a pandemic. Yes, it was. Next slide. We went through after those two years and a half through an external independent evaluation to really step back and also have some some perhaps divergent opinion really stated clearly to be able to much more formulate appropriately what we want to plan for the future. So I won't go too much into the detail of of the methods of this external evaluation. But as you can see, this was really something strong, robust that took a lot of time, but that was needed to really to inform the next step. Just to let you know, we have had a quite good response rate, forty-four percent. You know, you're used to questionnaires like this. Usually it's much more twenty percent. So it it shows something also. Next one. All the or everything will be published. Also, you have the link if you want to see. So in terms of key findings, let me start by the things that could have worked far better and the improvement. So I won't go too much into detail. You have the link to the article, but let me just take some quotes that are really self-explanatory. And for this ten minutes presentation I have, let me just read the one from one partner. The difficulty to get timely ethical clearance in a situation of emergency was a real step back. So this is what has been experienced in some of the country and has been a bottleneck really to the response. But in half of the other country, this investigation and study were fully part of surveillance. So it was exempted. So there were a lot of little things like this that have really been a bottleneck and that we need to solve all of us globally. Next slide. Now, in terms of benefits and added value, I let you read the full codes. But perhaps let me take the codes of one of the country office focal points. This study provided a substantial contribution, especially zero prevalence studies because it was presented to officials in the government and it was used for decision-making, which was here to calculate right public health and social measures. So definitively, this is also some qualitative data we have had. It has been used. More difficult to really to have so much more quantitative data. But just to let you know that for the respondents, which were country office people, ninety percent of them agree that this initiative should continue. I think they felt like this was also a global community that we were really an enhance to 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 really be able to to help countries to deliver. Next slide. Okay, let me take a break. And for a metaphor that I like a lot to delineate a bit the future and the concept of those investigation and studies. So I use the Sleeping Beauty Study metaphor. So let me explain to you. With this slide, I think you will remember what what it is. Because this, the beauty why, because I some of those studies have some kind of physical or operational attributes that nobody has. I mean, let's say the other routine system and whatsoever. And because she's those to the addressing some pubicals question that are not addressed by others. Sleeping why? Because some of the study types will be operational only during will be operation during the pandemic period. But other will be activated only in an in the event of a novel virus that is emerging or something like this. And then the sleeping beauty why? Because as you can see, when she will have to wake up, she needs to be already dressed and well-dressed. She needs to to be ready to dance and on top sing and on top of that, to marry the prince charming and find it. Find him, sorry. So all in one go. I would not want to be her, but just to for you to explain about the the concept. And where we are can intervene and help her. When she's asleep, she will need to have the proper governance, the proper financing, the proper commitment to take care of her. So let's say it's much more the prince charming role. But she will need also to exercise, to dream, to eat. So I see that as much more as the fairy's role, which perhaps can represent ourselves to help her to exercise her muscles, so perhaps to do some exercise for some of those studies to have the ethical clearance ready. So this is a bit the concept I had in mind. Next slide. So the future. Let me delineate for you what we are thinking. There are two big pots, let's say, of activities for the architecture and governance. And then the second slide will be on really operationalizing this initiative. So in terms of the architecture and the governance, with the experience from COVID and the gain from it, we really don't want to lose that. And we would like to formalize an at-the-ready international framework for preparedness and response, the future pandemic, using the same concept, but improving it. And at the moment, it was really used for COVID. But we would like also to expand it to make it for sure for pandemic influenza, which is the next perhaps biggest higher risk in terms of pandemic. But also to make it pan-respiratory because we never knew which kind of pathogen will cause the next pandemic and for sure respiratory one, the other one that have most chance to pop up. We want to keep strong the equity component, the capacity building and the country ownership. They were fundamentals. Without the value of country ownership we've carried all around, we couldn't have had the trust that some of the countries stakeholders have put in us, sharing with us some data that were confidential for the for the good of the global response. And what was really important is, and that would need to be better, is tackling the science translation for decision-makers. Let me give you the example. If you have eighty percent zero prevalence in your country, what does it mean for a decision-maker? Will it mean that it will stop any non-pharmaceutical intervention? Or it's not exactly as simple as that? Next slide. In terms of operationalization, same concept as as we have been using during COVID, but really being realistic. We don't feel like a map with all most of the country highlighted in colors will work. We would like to develop a really an operational network of sites with few sites per region. There is no need for those studies to happen in every countries. But there is a need for representativeness. We it could not come only from certain region in the world. And also, they need those countryside also need to be really primed to conduct country-specific standardized pre-plan and pre-approved study. country specific standardized pre-plan and pre-approved study to really try to get rid of all the bottlenecks, the administrative, the processes bottlenecks that we have experienced. And um the solution to that uh as the the fairies are doing is to exercise those during peace time. Uh, the other uh issue we have faced and you fully know that uh in your network, I think it's the timing information should be able able to all to inform risk assessment. Um, uh, we have seen a lot of progress during this COVID pandemic. Uh, we can say that the GSA platform um uh was something uh we could perhaps not ask for that could have worked so well. Um, but this we have in mind to develop this kind of same acceptable architecture for timely sharing of results. Uh, which means they will need also to have some benefits for the people uh who are sharing those results, again aggregated results, uh nothing individual. But this is uh something we we are uh working on. Next slide. My last one. Yes, so just a summary slide. Uh, we tried to put the mantra here, keep public health questions to be responded to, key generic protocols, key sites after, before, during next pandemic. Um, so we will be happy for sure to work with your network uh for you to uh be some of the champions. At the moment, uh, we are preparing the list of countries uh that we or or even site inside countries because some countries are like continent um that we will propose um for uh to to become the champions for this initiative. Uh, so maybe you will be one of of the uh staff that will uh work on this one and we appreciate your support. And just the acknowledgement side, slide at the end, next one. Yes. Thank you very much. Happy to respond to your questions.
Thanks very much. Um, great presentations. Stop sharing my screen. Um, so thank you both for those those excellent presentations. I, we've already got a hand up. Mary Emily, go ahead. Uh, wait.
I'm sorry. Hi. So hi, everyone. Uh, thank you, Joshua. Thanks, Isabel. Um, I mean, I already know a little bit of your of those. Uh, and I think it was super interesting is um, I had a question for you, Isabel. Um, in the Unity Study and for your next steps, um, did you, did you feel that there was any appetite to include some qualitative data or protocols, surveys to look at the measures that were implemented? Or another point would be on how the decisions, what influence decision making in the countries, not only public health, I would imagine, but also other factors could influence so that we, when we uh develop recommendations, public health recommendations for countries, um, they're actually acceptable for the policymakers, but also for the population. So do you think, um, I mean, having gen- general uh protocols to be able to um share with countries is also something that IOA would like to do. Uh, there there are already some uh pre-existing protocols that are deployed in case of outbreaks. But I think that this, you, the the model you use is really inspiring and and could be uh could be really inspiring for IOA also. So um, do you have any uh? Sorry, it's a question I'll arrange. So uh, I'm going over.
It's passion that's speaking. I let the chair tell me when I need to respond.
Um, yeah, well, we can, I mean, that's a big question, so. Uh, maybe you respond first and then we can see if there's another one. We'll take the second.
Okay, so uh, to be honest, where we have been uh weak is on the uh much more qualitative uh aspect of studies. Um, we have been weak simply because we haven't had the right uh human resources. Um, it was a bit a war zone kind of um uh thing. So we we put in place uh the studies uh that uh have been already experienced or piloted in other country in the last pandemic and things like that. But definitively, um, uh, the qualitative uh studies that at the moment are missing. We've tried to uh work after one year with some social scientists here uh for them to put uh also protocol in place because I know there are plenty already existing. Um, we are really calling for um anybody who has those expertise uh to join the initiative, whether from from any partner organization, any UN organization and to really lead that that piece uh of work uh just uh coordinating and collaborating with us for really uh uh it's an open call to anybody, anybody who would like to to lead on this piece and perhaps your network will will want to be part of that. Over.
Oh, I'm already muted. Um, I see there's Grace. Do you want to speak to your question in the chat?
Yes, I want to speak to this question. Thank you for having me. As I showed, I am, I am contributing from Uganda. And I've also been um part of the discussion at NIH. I think that was uh four years ago. When when I first heard about this pre-planned, pre-approved studies and was really worrisome for us as 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 uh consultants for this NIH project. So for instance, Uganda has gone through a lot. And we have various experiences to share with countries which want to embrace this pre-approved, the pre-pre-planned studies which come during epidemics and pandemics. We have seen, for instance, many pharmaceutical companies take this chance to 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 administer or to try out to try out various pharmaceuticals. We have also seen very unethical studies just because there is now some room to carry out studies without ethical approval. In fact, four years ago, at NIH Bethesda, they allowed you, they allowed countries to strengthen their their FX committees after our discussion. I wonder why WHO is coming up with this thing now.
Thank you, Grace. I think Josh, yeah, go ahead.
No, no, let us respond. I give the floor to Josh if he wants.
Sure. Very important. Uh, it's a very important point of clarification, Grace, and I'm glad you brought this up. And the 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 goal of these protocols is to standardize science. It's so that we have high quality data collected at the national level, but also important data that can be compared across across countries and between countries so that we have national, regional and global understanding of the impact of of disease. Now, ethical approvals always apply and this is getting the science in place. Countries would then make adaptations for their own context, but nothing would ever be implemented in a country without local ethical approval. That's not being applied here.
Yeah, just to complement, uh, really, there was also also country ownership. I insisted on that. Uh, for us, we were technical support. It was the country also was deciding, uh, yes, please, uh, help us find the partner, find the, uh, find the funding, the right reagent to do the studies. Uh, and it was all were approved to national ethical committee and known were sponsored by pharmaceutical industry, for example. Um, so this is also, uh, I mean, the mandate of the UN to really be mindful about all this ethical consideration. Over.
Thanks both. Um, yeah, an important, important distinction clarification. Uh, Christine. Uh, mute.
No, no, I know. I was. Joshua and Isabel, thank you very much for your presentation. And maybe you advised that, but the question I have with this standard protocol, protocols that, I mean, that takes, I mean, I I I'm, my previous job was with NTDs and we needed to do a lot of survey and we tried way to basically integrate this survey with other surveys. It's something that you you have discussed, considered has, and maybe not focus on one disease, I would say, but to give the possibility for other program to jump into this surveys. And I know it's complicated in terms of the sampling frame and all of that, it's not, but it's really something we try to do in NTDs using the HIV. I don't remember the name of this uh of this uh this survey they do on a regular basis, but is that something you have considered to basically integrate other surveys to the respiratory diseases one, ones? No, I'm not sure I'm very clear. I need more coffee. Uh, thank you.
Christine, I'm, I'll leave the floor to, as well as unmuted, so.
Uh, I'm not.
Yeah, you're good. You're unmuted.
Um, so yes, Christine, uh, perhaps you're you're talking about um especially to get the the right uh statistical power to be able to say something that could be uh uh an help for evidence-based decision um to our policymakers. So for some of the study protocol, let me take the example of vaccine effectiveness uh in low middle income countries, for example, with certain um uh type of vaccine uh that were just mostly used in in low middle income countries. Yes, we have uh uh done it, uh some in Euro and Paru because there was already a network existing with those vaccine effectiveness uh studies network that were existing and uh they could pool data together to be able uh to ended up with the right sample size, to be able to have the right confidence interval to make to make the decision making much more um uh sure. So uh, this is uh, this is something we we are striving to achieve. It's not easy for some study types and because the contexts are so different, but uh regional pooling uh in countries that uh share the same context. Um, uh, regional pooling when uh the study methods are the same, uh, is something we have in mind and that will also help a lot uh of the region to uh to take decision when in their own country, they perhaps don't have the uh sufficient number of of people in those uh studies. Over.
Thank you. Yeah, that makes sense. And that that was a problem. I mean, we needed to, we need to to look into these protocols, HIV protocols, to see if it would fit the the power and uh but also the age groups and et cetera, et cetera. So I I I know it's not easy, just uh, I think the more we can integrate things, the better it is, but thank you.
I think Grace raised an interesting question. Um, it's good to to listen to it.
Yeah, absolutely, Grace. Do you want to, absolutely, for a story, Tom?
So uh, so I'm I'm also a researcher, so don't get me wrong. Uh, if I uh want to to carry out a study qualitative or quantitative in my country, it will take a minimum of about uh one month to six months depending on uh what the scientist's judgment is. Hmm? So for instance, if uh you want to collect samples, if you want to administer a vaccine or if you want to do a a trial of some of some sort, the 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 parameters of evaluation increase. And so researchers are frustrated with this, even myself, I'm frustrated with this. But I think these committees uh are 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 doing something here. They're trying to to protect the communities. And and they're trying to um to to minimize uh harm, harm to the, especially the patients. So how to negotiate these things? We know very well that pandemics, apart from COVID, of course, or epidemics normally take a very short time. There are some uh studies which want to do, which people want to do like within the, within the epidemic, yeah? So or they want to, they want to talk to people who are sick before they are discharged, you know? So I don't know how, why, why we have brought this this thing back because during that Bethesda's uh meeting, it was really uh a difficult discussion. Yeah.
Thanks. Thanks, Grace. I think that's um, I think you're highlighting exactly why we are. Um, if, drawing my own experience before WHO was running the flu program in Kenya and in Thailand and we had large research portfolios in collaboration with both governments. And indeed, it's frustrating how long ethical approvals can take and how quickly we may want to get information may not be in line with with the the bureaucratic and also necessary ethical approvals that are there. Um, and so that is frustrating, but I see this as if you have something that is in place and you, as part of your emergency pandemic preparedness, we're talking about emergency investigations right now. Or um, you you have a plan in place to say, when something emerges, we're going to want to do A, B and C. And this is the protocol that we would like to do that. And we can exercise that using seasonal viruses, if you will, for example, to make sure that it's working well. We would like to get an approval with you in place now so that we can have a rapid preapproval for what you already know the study will look like when an emergency comes. And then we can get the government, the information that it may need to protect its population much sooner than before. So that's the, I don't know if it'll work and that it, but and and that is the attempt at addressing this ethical, the this bureaucratic challenge that exists with getting research off the ground is to try to have what Isabel called sleeping studies there um exercised as part of being viewed as necessary to national pandemic preparedness because these are the same studies that you're exercising year in and year out that you'll have to use in an emergency to generate the the desire to have at least an expedited, if not a preapproval process in place so that you could implement, people like you could implement what you need to know quickly when the time comes. I hope that that's getting at your question, but that was the intent behind it.
Yeah.
Thanks, Josh. Thanks, Grace. Grace, did you want to add something?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I I just want to thank Joshua and uh and Isabel for for this, for this presentation. And I I uh somehow this is like these are discussions which you go like after even a one week, you go back like this, so much unfinished business. Uh, if people are dying of Ebola, is the first thing they are, a study, is it is 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 the priority thing there, a survey? Yeah, uh, of course I want to do a survey. Of course I want, I am very such. I'm not a clinician in this case. And then, of course, there are people who have uh who like to do uh vaccine trials. They have so many investigation of vaccines out there. So they're just waiting for an epidemic to strike. Yeah.
And this is in no way saying the first thing you do is a survey. The first thing you do is outbreak response and control, but there will come a time.
In this case, we have people with different needs. In this case, we have people with different needs. I've sat on a table where there is a researcher, there is a clinician, there is a health policymaker, it is very difficult indeed. So if you, if if you have not had any chance like this, then you will not, you will you will not uh uh maybe it will be difficult to understand what I'm saying. If I am in epidemic setting and I'm a researcher, the last thing on my mind is to attend to the priority issue there. I just want my data. I just want to perceive my pharmaceutical works. I just want to, yeah, this is in spite of whatever mechanism is in place, you see? And 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 so for for developed countries or for high income countries, the the situation can be managed, but like for my country, if an epidemic happens in the village, some of the things the policymaker will learn about only after they've happened. Only after, only after the the researchers have published even. Yeah, then then the policymaker will wonder, really, it was this in good faith? Was it done to really contribute to science? And was it the best thing to do in that situation where many people are helpless? You know, so these studies during emergencies really pose so many, so many uh questions, yeah?
Yeah. Grace, I think that's one of the things actually, um, in the DRC for the Ebola outbreak since the tenth and and having just, I was also in Uganda for the the most recent. I think one of the things that that raises as well and one of the reasons why we try to support the Ministry for Health with an IOA cell in an outbreak like Ebola or um as well with COVID, but um where the IOA model was really set up in Ebola was for exactly that as well to ensure that any data collection that is taking place is being done so under the Ministry of Health and we can demonstrate its use for operation decisions, you know? And that aim to really ensure that what we're collecting has a data user at the end and that we can actually demonstrate that in real time um to support this kind of thing of where does the data get owned? How do we ensure that the data is really used and that we're not doing what's, you know, nice to collect, but really? How do we ensure that the data is really used and that we're not doing what's, you know, nice to collect, but really what is um that guidance comes under a Ministry of Health um unit when we have the IOA cell? And that is kind of part of the objective, at least within within the IOA cells uh that we've been able to work through in Ebola. Is it absolutely hearing your 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 points very important?
Thank you.
And we have a couple of minutes left. Sorry. Does anybody, any other questions or um comments? To add in. Checking going once, going twice. Um, okay, but well then, very big thank you, Joshua and Isabel. That was a really excellent presentation and thank you, everyone, which is super important as well. Um, we will, of course, have the um the presentations online, so you can rewatch it on YouTube. Um, and in two weeks on the tenth, um, we have a presentation from Mary Emily looking at the IOA within WHO. So we will look forward to inviting everybody back uh in two weeks' time. If there's anybody who is not on the email list who would like to be, please be in touch. We'll make sure to add you to future invites on email list. So thanks again for the great presentations and discussion and wishing everybody a good entry into the weekend.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Yeah, bye bye.